Let's pray together. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the blessing to receive the University of Grace. Father, we ask you just to be now with this council and help us to do what is right for our town. And Father, we just want to thank you for our mayor that we've had this past four years. Thank you, Father, for the job that he's done. And we're going to miss him, but we got a good man coming in. And Father, we just ask you to be with him and be with all of us and help us to do what is right. Do what we will and keep his name in being.
Amen. Attention. Our favorite leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, and equal rights for all.
We welcome all of you here this afternoon. First, I don't think we have any amendments to the agenda. First thing we need to do is approval of amendments as presented for a public hearing in regular meeting from May 12th, 2014.
Reg. 12 approval is written.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Approval of financial statement as presented in May 2014. You got a motion. You have a second. Second, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Mayor's come in. Movie night. Did y'all bring the...
I'm gonna bring it in the morning.
Okay, we're gonna... We've got a little mishap with our projector. We said we can fix it if we can't, but try to get another one. But we'll go from there. We'll let y'all notice them as we know. Besides that, Coach Knight, he's in the hospital for a few days, so we can't have movie night until he gets out. He's in Quincy Hospital. He's doing all right. He had... They told him he had pneumonia. And they just... He's a diaphragm along with some other stuff. And they just trying to keep him in there till they give him a med again. But he's doing okay. Old business, none, new business. Number one, adopting the Boulevard Daily News. That was official journal for the town of Maryville. This is something that you do every year.
Was you being raised a level of courtesy during the way you part? Did fail or...
I don't know if they were invited. I don't... I don't know. I like the...
Just curious.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Number two. Michael Rick, reservist for the Maryville Coalition Department. Mr. Staley, do you want to...
Listen, Michael Rick. He applied for a reserve position. He's worked in all fields. He has no law enforcement experience whatsoever. He's on the... He into...
Okay, Michael, he's taken the...
He took the psych exam. He tested.
That's something y'all need to know that Michael, the bench duty, you know, anybody that comes on, they have to take the psych exam. He managed to fly in coach.
He tested. I have a joint exam.
How's he do that?
There is a joint exam. I'm a little lucky.
You got how many reservists still?
One.
One? Who?
Robert R. Fort, I don't know who the third. And Scott Black is my other reserve. Or my reserve that I have. And he works in Texas. And he really gonna get to come in. I don't know. There's a couple of them I need to take off the reserve list because one of them been terminated, which I forgot to put on the agenda for this week.
Michael, you think you want to be in the Police Department?
Yes, sir.
Definitely not for a lot of... You good, man? How many hours a month would he be required?
Twenty hours a month. And that's... Let's see how I put that. That's what we require is to put in, twenty hours a month. I think he can come in anytime he wants to, put in however many hours he wants to put in.
Do we pay him for those twenty hours? You got any military experience or just basically what you're doing?
Yes, sir. Just basically what I've done.
Is this your wife?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been lucky enough to jump in?
She's lived there her whole life. Moved there about a year now.
You're married?
Yes.
I'm... We are married.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, if he's... If he's... Should I come inside and make a motion to you?
I'll say it.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Have to go to work now. Okay, number three. Full-time patrolman for the Maryville Coalition Department, Paul George.
Mr. George has numerous years of experience. He's post-serviced. He worked for the Baltimore Parish Sheriff's Office for seven years in jail. And Welsh PD. From 2011 to 2014. He's a field sobriety instructor. He's been to the instructors' schools. He's qualified as firemen. And I think with his experience, it's something we need in the Maryville Police Department because it's something that we lack. Myself, I only have two years, three years of experience. And these other officers, that's all they have. His experience is much bigger than the police department. And his training and skills that he has will benefit us.
Michael, I know you had brought me a resume and I looked at it. It looked like he's well-qualified. And you remember at the time, I said, "The council may have some questions due to money restraints." So I... The floor is open.
I really got my eyes on that one when I checked my package was delivered and I seen it. I know I talked to you before that really as the chief of police. That's what you should be to be is the chief of police and not perhaps necessarily spend your whole time pulling shifts and things, understanding that sometimes it would be necessary. But whenever I got this deal just for the month of May, you know, I looked at Marlin, I don't know if he was here for the whole month of May. He wrote 21 tickets in October, 29 citation. In Isabel. It was Isabel, six in a month of May.
No, sir.
He worked all the whole month of May. He wasn't off any of his days for him.
Well, he took a couple of vacation days. I don't know.
Two vacation days out of the month. Okay, well, he wrote four tickets, you know, for the whole month of May. Okay, and Tendell didn't do a whole lot better. Was he there a couple of months of May?
Yes, sir.
Now, he wrote seven.
He also took... I think it was a week vacation.
Seven tickets. Now, Thompson is a part-timer. He's had another mission now. Wrote four tickets. And the backup that you've got reserved, he wrote more tickets than one of your other officers that's full of time. Okay. Thing is, I've only brought in $5,434. I remember that the mayor said at one point there that we did not want to be known as a ticket-writing town, and we don't. Okay? But, you know, I went Sunday at the service, went over there to the post office to eat and just sitting there at the deal, I was amazed. And then making the traffic violations were happening right around our channel and things. And, you know, spinning out of, you know, a dollar store there and seeing if they can get to going 100 mile an hour before they hit the city limits or something. I don't know. You know, making turns there and almost running into a bar ditch when they made a turn going in front of the nursing home and things. You could all see all that stuff right there. You know, and I understand that it's more the place force than just writing tickets and everything. But, you know, we cannot run a financial problem right now. We cannot justify with the way the situation's going right now. Okay? You know, somebody is... You know, the first thing that comes to my mind, and that may not be true, the first thing that comes to my mind, maybe we got some timid officers out there nervous about pulling somebody over. Okay? And that's not a job for them, if that's the case, okay? You know, it's not your everyday job.
Were the officers there whenever that was happening? Was the officer there whenever that was happening?
No, absolutely. Only thing that was there whenever I happened was a hard one in the post office meeting.
Okay. Well, I mean, they could have been on a call. They could only be at one place at one time. We only have one place.
As I say, and I know they got more jobs than just tickets and everything, but, you know, we definitely got to look at the whole picture. We got to look at what we can afford, you know? And we got to be, and we don't want to be known as a ticket-writing town or something other, but same token, we've got to be able to take it halfway, carry our weight, you know? You know, in most towns, you know, I don't know whether pulling eight-hour shifts, five days a week, or whatever.
It's 12-hour shifts in there. They work seven days out of two weeks. That's one of the nights.
And one of the other things that did enter my mind also, I know we got a drug problem and it seems like maybe it's getting to be more and more. You know, are we doing anything better? Or got anybody qualified to do anything about it?
We do. And I made an arrest on two individuals that were using meth. They had methamphetamine, marijuana, and some pills, a bunch of drug addicts and everything. Me and Officer Tindall was on that call at the time, or on that traffic stop, and Officer Tindall got a call from Mr. Larry's Trailer Park. Well, I wanted to ask, he was on his way to Mr. Larry's Trailer Park, somebody was breaking into Campbell's Saw Shop. Now, the criminal activity ain't getting any better. It's just getting worse.
Well, an ideal situation for a street in Maryville probably would be to have a officer, you know? Good officer.
That would be...
But we can't go above what we're pulled, that's the whole point.
You know, and I've talked to Michael about this, and the bench of the police, all these little towns are in the same condition. Most police departments, they, you know, they go in the red. And I've talked with Mr. or Senator Mr. Smith about it. I don't know what the answer is to it. You don't want to be known as a speed trafficker, Mr. Smith. Senator Smith can tell you that. They've addressed that sometime a week, a couple of months ago, you know? It's not just Maryville. It's all these little old towns. It's a red. You know, you can't tell an officer, hey, you got to go out and write tickets. You can't tell him that, you know? But, you know, all about all you can do is say, hey, you know, you need to do your job and all. I'm thinking that Mr. Reeves, when he takes office, he'll be talking with Mr. Moses and probably with Senator Smith to try to address some of the cases, you know, see what the answer is, more revenue, you know, for these little towns like this. One thing I'd like to see, you talk about the rise in crime rate, and I'm not saying it's not, but we need to be able to see something that, a chart or some kind of graph that shows us where it's rising and why, like, it's compared to this time last year or now, that how much it is rising.
I can tell you why it happened. I mean, I can see it's the drugs, more options.
Well, the crystal meth is one of the...
One of the most popular drugs we have. Crystal meth.
And that's something that needs to be addressed, but still, just like the deal you talked about with Campbell's and all this going on at the same time, that could be an isolated incident, well, after one time. But just to say that the crime rate's going up, we don't, you know, we need to be able to see something. And the other thing is, like, you and I talked about this before, this man has impeccable potential, looks like, and I'd love to have him. I think he'd be a... Something that we really need, but important. And like I told you, if you feel like you could upgrade, you know, nothing wrong with that, but the only way you can do that is get rid of what you got, or what it is one of the ones that you got. Because I think this man would be a... Something we really need, but, you know, until we get rid of something we got, we can't do it.
What do the driver's months ticket numbers look like? I mean, that's just one month.
Yeah. Well, I got a breakdown here and everything that just so happens that we have to send a dollar to the state for every ticket that's broken. And in some cases, it's better, like, May, they had to send in 65... May and June, she had to send in $65 of this, so that means we're 65 tickets rolled out. August, she had to send in $91, 91 tickets. July, 98, 98 tickets. September, slowed down a bit, but sent it to $4. October, $78. November, 68.
Are you talking about how much we paid the state or...
She has to send a dollar in for every ticket.
She sends a dollar in, so that's what he's saying. She's sending in as soon as she wants a ticket in, although he has so much to see. No, Michael, these, I've got to know these people set here pretty good. They don't do things, you know, causing personalities or anything. They've got to look out for what's best for the town. And I know that's what you have to do, you're an elected official just like we are, and it's not an easy situation. You know, we'd like to be able to forward more deputies than what we have, but it'd be irresponsible on our part to say, well, that's our role, if you know it. Let me say one thing that, you know, Michael and I have talked about this, and there may be some of you that's not aware of, it takes so long to collect a ticket sometime. If somebody in Louisiana, say, gets a ticket and they live in Baton Rouge and they say, I'm not paying that ticket. Okay, say, and this is all how it happened, that they just got their driver's license renewed. That's good for four years. So until they go get their driver's license renewed again, when they go to get it renewed, this flag, hey, you got a ticket over in Maryville, then they will pay that ticket. You know, and that's their string for years, you know? It's just hard to collect tickets. If you got some, you just can't collect. You got people in Texas, you know, and with this flag, you get, you get money, you know? It's just...
It's all that's... Much license, no suspended, driver's suspended.
You're right, you know? And it's... Some towns, I know it's one little town, they hire the collectionators to try to collect the tickets, you know? So it's a lot of things involved. There's no personalities involved. We'd love to have him. We really would. There's nothing personal. You know, what I hear them saying is that, you know, they don't see that the money is there, so...
I had Jennifer... Can I say something right? I had Jennifer print me out a sheet on unpaid citations, and we had $77,000 in unpaid citations. There was not $100,000 in paid citations. I feel like I'm being punished for people not paying their citations, you know? I can't afford another officer because somebody might want to pay their citations, but I don't feel that's wrong.
To a degree, to a degree you may be. But if we can't get the money in here, what we supposed to do, punish the whole town of Maryville? You know, whoever races or rock built up or something, we don't got the money. To a degree, you're right. But, you know, we... The bottom line is, we still have to have the money.
We're probably running in a hole right now for the Police Department, somewhere between 15 and 60,000 dollars. Well, that's got to come out of another pot somewhere. But that's, you know, you can't do that for just so long.
So if he's... I know he's... We can provide a training. So if he was to say, provide that specific training for you, would you be able to get a certificate that's state-recognized?
Just fine. Standardized, full of some products.
So he could get everybody together and train them on it, and that's state-certified, and everybody would have a rec...
And that is my only recognition, instead of we can have a joint. That sounds like something we need to do.
And if we have $77,000 of the tickets out there, can we recoup that money and wait to build...
Basically, we, you know, it's like he said, someone...
You hear him, he got the license renewed or something. You could keep supervising, and I have talked about it. He said you can issue a bench one, you know, but how far do you go for that if they count gap each? What does it cost you to go? And I'm just using Baton Rouge judge example. What does it cost to send an officer down there to pick the money and all that? And like I say, I've noticed some of the town, they hire the collectionators. It's not just Maryville, it's all of Grace. And you got some people just say, hey, I'm not paying that.
And another time, Mr. George was involved in an officer-involved shooting in Welch, right? While he was working to Welsh PD. He's been cleared of it. And that's another aspect that he could help us out on. None of us have ever been involved in shootings unless you're an IRA or veteran. I mean, none of us have actually been shot at or shot at somebody, not something we've ever did. And he could provide us the training for that, you know, the, what he went through, whatever he had to look down the sides, right? He squeezed the trigger. What all happened, what all that was going on. I just feel that he'd be a good candidate for the position.
I agree with you, Michael. I think he would be an outstanding...
He'd be excellent.
There's no...
Mr. George, you said you was at Welch for three years.
Yes, sir.
Why did you leave Welch?
Personal reasons. It was too far from home.
Were you living in the title when you were at Welch?
Where I'm living now, in Zurich.
Okay. And how long were you in the Ritter from the Sheriff Department, right?
Yes, sir.
Was I on patrol or was I in there in the jailhouse?
In the jail. I worked some patrol and I was also the jail investigator, helped detectives work cases and stuff.
You were right at home there. How long were you there?
Almost seven years.
Why didn't you leave there?
I had a difference of opinion with all the superior over there, who had sent retired.
And I talked to Ricky Moses and I talked to the chief of police in Welch, and both of them said that he's a good officer. He'd be good for a small town. I say, he gets out there, he's a go-getter, you know? He makes drug arrests, DUI arrests, rides tickets, he does what he needs to do, takes care of his...
When it was that, those years you put in anything, you could have disagreements or slight problems and things. The thing is, we... The reason I ask this question, we have to be careful. We did have a chief police here that we thought pretty highly of and everything, and we got us involved in a bit of trouble. We have to be careful for insurance purposes.
Well, Michael, we appreciate you and for Mr. George. You know, I wish circumstances was different, but unless somebody here makes some motion, brings it before the table, it dies for lack of evidence. We do appreciate you, your apply for the position, and something may come up. It might come up. We never know, but Michael, we understand your plight, and I can promise you, David is working on it. I can promise you that.
And Michael, I understand that nobody is against you here, and nobody is against him. It is just a question of finances, finances, what we can afford. And I know you're not being pressured for people not paying their finances. It is just a matter of economics.
And you certainly do need to be able to fill where you can supervise more than just at the roof of Sheriff. There's no question about that, sir. But I think you're going to have to do some looking and some juggling.
I have an idea. How many reservists can we have? Would that be an option, just for a little while, so maybe something comes available?
You may talk about him, the bill reservist. He probably needs to work.
I understand everybody needs to work, but, you know, it's an option. Till something comes available, we can make something happen.
Well, if that's something Michael wants to do sometime, that's fine, but I don't have it to suit his situation. He probably needed a job, yeah.
If he can't afford to pay for the gas to come down here working, he'll have some...
It was an option. Make something happen.
Kind of fit something, yeah.
Well, again, you know, like I say, Mr. Reeves is going to be working on it. Michael, maybe there's something to change, and we appreciate you applying, Mr. George. So if there's no other discussion, we'll move on to number four, Mr. Greg Horn.
Yes, sir. What I'm up here for, I guess, is inquire about opening maybe one or two businesses here in Maryville. I already have a business over in one place, and I'm looking to expand it possibly. I've done all the front hill here across from the parade, and I'd like to be able to put a small engine repair shop in one of those companies. If I can get some old lawn mowers and fix them up, I'll possibly sell used lawn mowers there, used bunks, that sort of thing. If I could work and progress, I'd be interested in opening maybe like a hair salon. That's my little step I stepped in here.
Greg, everybody here is welcome, and you is, and I really do. When you, and I... When you decide exactly what you, you know, you want to try, or what you're looking at, like, if you're looking at, like, the hair salon, which would be a portable building...
It'd be like the one next door here.
Yeah. And it's like David and I both told you, we would have, I don't know, the way, or just the right word, but I'm, and maybe I'm speaking for the council, I don't think David would have a problem with that, but I think that there probably needs to be something in writing. You'll probably, if you do a portable building like this, that's your next step, you'll probably need to go through the fire marshal, go call to the ramps and all that. And when you submit that plan at the same time, what I think, if y'all, if I'm wrong, you probably need to come and bring it before the council then. At that time, they, you know, they will do what they need to do.
And I understand that. All I'm asking is, and I'm going to follow whatever standards we give them. I'm just asking y'all's input. How do y'all feel about it? Are y'all... Does anybody have a problem?
I don't think any...
I don't have a problem with business. The only thing that I would say about that particular action is what you said, probably fit in, you know, down there at the station, of course, you've got some big, heavy-duty equipment down there and everything. That would fit in there. Of course, we do have residential right around that area.
There's residential behind me here, though.
Lawn mowers, not real layoff and everything. Bolt mowers, I don't see a very big problem with that. It certainly doesn't for hair salon or something like that, or, you know, we need little business. I've said for years that, you know, they, for one thing, down there at the saw shop, they got some backup little business that would probably be beneficial, and I've said for years, I don't understand why somebody don't put some where they work from bolt mowers or something coming through here because it comes through like Charles and everything. And everything, so, it's, it's something probably beneficial, I don't know, so like, about here in town, and a lot of people.
Well, Greg, I, uh, excuse me, I can't speak for everybody here, and, and all the councils, but, 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 but I mean, Maryville needs businesses desperately. And the thing I would be, or rather, I, or rather, I would work with you, with, with any business that, that you wanted to start. But they got it to part, the part we turn to, and, and, you know.
I mean, now this guy's, but it's, it's commercial, correct?
Yeah, it's commercial, and I put it in y'all's package, what is being correct, it's for, it's commercial, you know, and y'all wouldn't have to, and I keep saying, way, or, 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 and I'm not sure that that's, that's the right term for it, you know, but that's what was done here with this one. And I'm hearing them say they, they don't have a problem.
You might say, even though it's a portable building, if, if, if y'all, as a council, say, hey, I don't want it, I want it on the slab, anchored down, I mean, whatever rules that we need to follow, I'm here to follow, I'm not trying to shortcut that. And that would mean I'm, I'm trying to help me, me a living, and kind of help this town grow a little bit.
When you brought the oil silt shop to, to town, and placed, where we did tires, takes and tiny, that was a, a super double A plus, you know? Not have to drive all the way to River, because it's all Chinese, you know?
Can I ask a question? Uh, are you gonna try to put the beauty shop maybe in the same location where you're gonna have small engine repair, or a different?
No, it's gonna be in a different building, it'd be in the same, like, three months.
No, I know, different buildings, but if you put it in the same, back there, on the same road?
Yes, and there's, I bought three lots over there.
Oh, okay.
The, the building that I'm trying to put the saw shops on one, and there's two beside, one of them's already actually got a little pad there, somebody put, sometime or other, and that's why I was talking about thinking about putting this hair salon.
Greg, I, I think they would like to, and they're all, everybody's great, whatever you want to do, they'd like to, just be aware that the pavilion is there, you know, and just whatever you do, you're saying, you know.
Well, tell me what I can't do, because I, I, I mean, I don't know if y'all realize this now, but I, I, I want to prosper.
But they, what, well, I, and I, if I'm speaking out of turn, I would think, I would think they would want a bunch of junk, when I say junk, or by more laying around here and there, you know.
There, there again, if I need to, behind that shop, if I need to put up a privacy fence, I got no problem doing that, because I understand that.
And, uh, and also, uh, we don't have often, but we do have a parade every so often, and it comes from the nursing home right down that strip and things. Maybe it's that particular day, you know.
True, I got, I got no problem, I'm here to help prosper, I'm not here to.
Parade lasts every bit of thirty minutes, so it's not like a long length thing or something, but people gather up and down that road.
Sure. I've talked to Greg about this quite a bit, uh, I, I know he's willing to do whatever we want him to do. I talked to him about the portable building, and I told him he'd have it approved by the council, uh, and he even said he would put it on a slab if that's what it takes. And, and, and I think he's gonna do whatever he has to do, I talked to him about we have a lot of his old big stuff moved up here, or here across from the pavilion, and he's willing to do whatever I think he needs to do, we just need you to break it to us and say, this is what we're gonna do.
No, I got no problem, I just, what I'm here to do is just see if y'all have a problem with it before I start spending money, is what I'm looking for.
Well, I'm glad we got a lot of, a lot of places, go by here, that's a problem.
Okay, yes, that's all I'm asking.
You get it rolling.
I think it was the right thing, yeah.
It is real hard to generalize, I gotta, it's, it's, I gotta do it. It is real hard to generalize with, I mean, with sketchy information.
I understand that.
Like, but I'm, like, but I mean, we are all for you, and, and I'm sure something, it can be worked out in two hours, that's, that is, actually.
Okay, that's it?
All right, that's it.
I should appreciate y'all.
Well, in participation, we don't have any public participation, I'm gonna let Josh give y'all an update, kind of, upgrade, kind of what he's done this past week, that's, uh, animal control first.
I go down to the pound every week, or every day, clean the pins out, uh, I've made a few improvements to the drainage system, down there's not really good, um, somebody calls by a dog, I go see about it, if it needs to be picked up, I write everything down in this little booklet, and, um, I try to adopt them out, because I'm, I know we're supposed to have them put down, I, that's the only part of the job I really don't like doing, so I try to adopt them out if I can, and, um, I bet the people know about the laws, that, the police laws and everything around here, and, um, the feed and stuff down there, I'm going and getting the feed, the dog food, bringing it up there, and I've had fifty dollar buckets for the pound and everything, so.
And I'm there, it's a place there, Superior, it's down there by the water.
Yes, sir, there's a pin down there at the water slant, I have the keys to it, I have it locked in, um, if somebody wants to come look at dogs, they get in contact with me, and I take them down there, because I'm not the one that has keys to the actual anything that will be happening down there, so. Now, I've actually got, I've had two people call them, want to come look at the dogs, but, I mean, if I have, uh, somebody calling, like, if Larry at the city hall calls, I write it down in this book, that way, if they come up here and say, well, he, he did this, I can point to them and show them a little book, but I write it down, and I have another little book, it's, like, if I go by dogs, or if they get adopted out, then I, uh, keep all that in another book.
How many dogs do you have down there?
Uh, altogether, right now, I have seven down there, because I just picked up four, they look like little schnauzer, mixed puppies, but I had to put them all in a pin together, because I only have five single pins, and I have one big pin, and I can only hold, like, the, well, the five singles, once I fill them up, I'll have that big one in here.
What about pit bulls?
Well, sir, I, I've got.
Pita, and the pita, get, get one of them out, so you just want to have it put down, or?
Um, well, I have had a few, um, I have one get loose, I don't know if somebody went down there and got it out, or what, but, um, I have had a few pit bulls that I picked up, with my own list, there's been little dogs running loose, or pit bulls, leave them, like, they'll move out, leave them, and I get called to go pick them up, and, or somebody say, that's not my dog, or something like that, and.
Josh, is, is that pin big enough, the pins?
Um, the pins themselves are probably about this wide, they're about six foot long.
Yeah, I know.
But as far as, like, putting two big dogs in there, it's kind of crowded, but the one big one that I have, I can put several dogs in here.
Well, well, what, well, what I'm asking, it is, it is, here's, it is, do you ever run out of room?
Yes, sir, I mean, I've, I've been, there, there's been a couple of times where I've been to play the pool, and I've had people call me, and I just, I have to tell them that I really can't do anything, because I'm full, you know, because after I fill them five pins up, that's basically all I can take, because I have to start building a book after that.
Right. Josh is a, he's a animal person, he's a dog person, uh, sometimes that's not good for the town, because he tries everything he can to dump them out before he takes them to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really don't like, I really don't like seeing them put down, like I said, the rest I'm leaving, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but that's the only part of the job that I don't like, and I'd rather see them try to adopt it out before that is the last resort, and now, when I started, they do it every week, putting dogs down, and now it's just switched to every two weeks, so, uh, they'll have the vet tomorrow, and then after tomorrow, they won't have one for two weeks.
How long do you try to keep it out before you ever have to put things?
Um, well, the standard deal is a seven, a ten day hold period, and then after that, uh, try to adopt them out, um, like you say, if you had a dog, I picked it up, I would call and say, hey, I have your dog, you need to come get it, and.
And I didn't want it, I wanted to be.
If you didn't want it, you could just say, well, oh, I'll surrender it to you, and then I can put it up for adoption, because I have a Facebook page set up, it's, uh, Maryville pound, all the dogs I pick up, I take pictures, and upload them on the computer for people to look at, and, uh, I have several pit bulls, like Mars for Pauls, they're helping me network all the dogs around here, so.
Well, Josh, does the town still have the pit bull provocation?
Um, they do, but I haven't really had that much problem with the pit bulls.
Is, is the ordinance still in effect?
Yes, sir, I mean, it's, it's still in effect, but, uh, the places I've been to, people just don't care, they're not gonna follow it, so, yeah. And, I mean, I've had a couple of calls that I've went on, and they, the ordinance states that if I go on a dog call, then I'm supposed to take the dog, and take it to the pound, and have it impounded, well, when I showed up over there, they're, well, you're not taking this dog, and so I just, I'll tell them, well, then, uh, do I have to go talk to city council about it, and, and they did, they tried to stand there and argue with me, but I really haven't gotten any pit bull calls, but, I mean, I know the ordinance is still in effect, because I have a copy of the, all the ordinances and stuff at my house.
If Josh needs to be, what he does, he'll come give a hold of Michael, and, and, and take some one of the options, really. He actually does a too good a job, somebody wants a dog, the dog, you know, the dog don't want to go, Josh does a good job. He, he does a good job.
And I assume the people that come down there and say, hey, that's my dog, there's a ticket involved?
Um, yes, sir, the first time I picked him up, I give him a warning, the second time, if I have to go back to the same house, it's a fifty dollar fine, it's paid to city hall, then they'll contact me, and I'll release the dog back to them, and if it's an outside dog, I tell them it has to be on chain, it can't be run and loose. If I go back the third time to pick it up, then that'll get the dog back, because that's basically the way it's saved in the ordinance.
There is.
I'm not, there's some stuff, I'm not really sure what I can do, some stuff that.
Oh, that's all in, though, okay.
I mean, there's stuff, I think I can't do, some stuff that I can't, and I'm not really sure of what I can, can't do around here, so there's certain stuff that, uh, I don't do, because I don't know if I can push it, and stuff like that, so, I mean, I try to be lenient with people, but when, if they want to stand there and try to argue with me and stuff, then I, I start getting on to them, I have a ticket book that, uh, if I have to write citations, I write them, I have wrote that, and.
Do you, uh, spray or, depending with it?
Oh, no, sir, I don't have anything on me if I go on an animal call, um, I have to, if it's a vicious animal, I have to tell the police department.
Not taking anything with you, if you go over there, let's see if I can call about getting a dog, and then it has to be aggressive, and it tears your leg up, and we've got some kind of responsibility, right?
Yeah, I'm, that, I have no kind of pepper for anything to carry with me, um, there's actually a place in the Ritter that has that we've ordered, so I'm not sure if they.
We, we have some, we just had to give it to you, John.
But, yeah, I mean, I haven't been on that many.
It's not like the collar, you know, it's the way you spray a dog, the collar, they have to spray each other or something, no one is like, but, uh, anyway, that's the same thing I have.
All right, Greg, anything else, public participation? Well, whenever you have trouble, that pit bull is not here being married, but. No, that's, it's. If you have trouble with that, you get all the police department, they can issue them a citation, because they don't want pit bulls, dogs in Maryville.
Yeah, I've told people that, that have pit bulls, but they either take them and hide them, or they'll just flat out tell me that they're not getting rid of their dogs, so I'll say, okay, and I'll go to the police department about it, because there's still a couple of people that I know of around here that have them, but I haven't dealt with it, because they're just, I guess they've had them for so long, and nobody's really gonna think about it, they're just not gonna deal with their dogs.
Say some of them, everything that keeps them in the house, and nobody, you know, but anyway, but Josh does a good job.
Because I take pictures and document every time I have to go on call, I've got the candy on my trail here, you know, like I said, I have this right here, that every time I go on call, I'll write down everything that happens, that way, if somebody wants to come up here and say that I tried to say something else, I, I can open up my book and say, look, it's right here.
Josh, you come by, pick up your spray, before you, before you take it, you gotta spray hat bill.
I'll send mail to it.
If, if hat bill can stand it, it's all right for a dog, if you're trying that. Thank you, Josh. Public pred, it's interesting, would you like to say something? I know you're here for swearing in and all that, and we want to get to that shortly, but, uh, before we do, stop everything.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, I, what I'm really here for is swearing in, but I did want to take an opportunity to say thank you to this council, this mayor, this staff, for, uh, supporting me and giving me the support, and I hope in turn I've supported you, and I know I have. And I don't think that'll change with Mayor-elect David E., but I think we'll have a good council, I will be an excellent mayor, and I've noted the problems that we're facing, uh, that most communities our size, and even larger, are facing. Uh, you might, uh, with the police department, you might consider, uh, I don't know what your court costs are, but you might consider an increase in that. Might not solve, probably could help with that, other than that, I'm not sure how you, uh, how you analyze and evaluate and pursue possible police department, most are not, uh, I know, that's a very difficult thing, but, having said that, thank you for, uh, your four years, uh, Mr. Mayor, you've done a great job, and we appreciate that, and the council's done a great job, and, and we'll continue to do so, and I look forward to serving with my good friend Dale.
I always tell everybody, and I told David this, Senator Smith, uh, Mr. Dorothy Silverhill, they called you, you know, they'll, they'll call down here and say, we've got some money in the pipeline, send the paper, and we really do appreciate it, because a town like Maryville, a small town like this, the revenue is just not that great, and we do a lot of things, the roof on here, that's grant money, Mr. Smith and Mr. Steel, uh, the, uh, community center, that's grant money, Mr. Smith and Mr. Steel. There's two hundred and seventy-five thousand or so dollars, uh, he's got in the pipeline for a wheel station, I heard David's aware of that. There's another thirty-some thousand dollars we talked today with Mr. Mark Parente, that's, that's on the governor's desk, it's gonna help us to seed money to go toward the wheel station, you gotta have a certain amount of seed around that particular project. But if, if, if it wasn't for people like him and Mr. Steel, I don't know what these little things, you would never have anything, because, like, we talked about the coalition department, we talked in the past about the water department, those are these programs cooling the whole, so it takes your sales tax money, you know, and all, what that leaves you is the grant money, the deep people, the others that allow you to do things, you know, so we really appreciate it, I want you to know that. Your next goal, Ren, is bringing this side.
Okay. Well, thank you, but without our small communities, you know, we would not be in the same state, so we want to, and do, put great emphasis on helping our small communities, we can't solve your ticket problem, uh, and bring more businesses, but we certainly contribute all those things that you just talked about there, and I appreciate you saying that.
It's a big help, a little town like this would, would be able to accomplish anything for that, we appreciate you. Okay, no other further participation, we have a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
A motion and a second, who said?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And y'all stay seated, we're gonna have a swearing in, sir, I want to hear about Mr. Brian Woodstock, who's sitting in the corner. Okay. I want to, David, come up here, please. Y'all take it. Y'all stay.
I got some trouble.
What do you mean? We just, okay. You missed a case.
Oh, you mean over at the senior city?
Yeah.
Or they have a pool, they put that on.
Everything.
Nationwide.
Uh, me, or me, or.
I want to do a form beat with that, thank you.
He does a great job, I love that stuff. I want to tell y'all something, Mr. Brian LaStod here, David is a wealth of information, and he's always there, and he's always available.
I know where he lives.
I don't know where he lives, but I know where he stays. Keep you under trouble, that through.
We see, I'm not sure Mississippi about the order of this, put a job out here about the order, so I have the mayor, we'll do the mayor in the world, the government, and then, please chief, I have.
Thank you, thank you for this, all, all possible, we'll do what we can, and then I'll have everybody.
Y'all wanna do it three times, it won't take that long to do it that way. I tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, Mr. Lee, Dan Carter, uh, look quick, get that, and, and Larry, I want to give a hand to council office, how much I appreciate all of you all, and I really enjoyed working with all of you, it's been quite a transition since the minute over here, over the last, you know, so, three, four, five years, whatever, and then done a tremendous job, I've done that, done a wonderful job, the council, the ordinance.
You guys, is the people sitting right back there?
Y'all got fantastic people here in that one, and I know y'all have done a good job, I know that's gonna continue to, all right, David, I want you to raise your right hand, when I say aye, just please say your name, and if I have to say aye, really, I do agree with you. Aye.
Thank you.
Do solemn swear affirm that I support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of this state, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as mayor, county mayor, parish forelord, according to the best of my ability and understanding, so help me God. You're gonna do a sign right here. Y'all wanna get a copy for here now? I'm gonna send this a little, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send that out to the, to the, they'll have that, we'll have that, if you ever need your, we'll have it. David's not here, I understand, he's not gonna be here, so, man, House Hoffman, Amanda, and Mark, if I could ask y'all please stand up, and what I'm gonna ask you to do is, when I say aye, you'll please say your name, and I'll read this note, and then we'll go from there. Okay, Mark, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand, and, and I'm just gonna sit back, okay, aye, please say your name.
Mark, um, Amanda.
May I start?
Do solemn swear affirm that I support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of this state, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as alderman, alderwoman, county mayor, parish forelord, according to the best of my ability and understanding, so help me God. I'm gonna pass this out to you, don't sign it. Amanda, Mark.
Who's talking, bro? He's not, he has exit.
The other way.
How sorts of?
It's a different way. Right, yeah, that's why.
Someone need my hair style a little pink, you gonna help me out with that, too?
I sure will.
That's the thing, it is a four-year duration, like, perhaps, or direct?
He colored his black hair, it's now bright pink, I'm hot.
Tell me that's not true, though.
I didn't, I picked the hair color out, I didn't.
Pink.
Greg, there's your hairstylist.
I was picking it up the other day, he came in, and I, I thought he had a feature in that, of course, all I see is just, I was picking it up, and he said, real men wear?
That's true.
That's what I heard.
That's the old saying, going around here, let it.
I'm sure they've failed with your hair.
Congratulations, David, I'm gonna say aye, you'll say your name, and I'll read this out, too, raise your right hand. Aye. Do solemn swear affirm that I support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of this state, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as chief of police, county mayor, parish forelord, according to the best of my ability and understanding, so help me God.
Congratulations, all of you, we'll try to work you all on doing here. We've got some cake, and.